Good morning, members, and welcome to the EGM meeting of the full council. During the meeting today, I will be making rulings on process and conduct during the meeting, and would ask council to abide by the standing orders and rules of debate. At certain times, I may seek guidance from my advisers, and should we need to adjourn, I will inform council of what is happening and the time for us to reconvene. If member's speech is run over the time allocated, I will allow you to finish your sentence, but ask you to finish as quickly as possible. I would also like to take this opportunity to remind members that there is no local government equivalent of parliamentary privilege. Members will therefore be liable for any defamatory statements they make. If you wish to speak during the meeting, I would ask that you raise your hand and wait for me to invite you to speak. Please raise any points of order verbally. I will then pause the meeting to deal with the point of order. When raising a point of order, please state which procedure, rule or law you believe has been breached. All votes will be conducted via the electronic voting system today. If we receive any amendments to the recommendations before council today, I will adjourn to ensure that all members have adequate time to read the amendment. I move to item one, apologies, are there any apologies for absence?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We have apologies from councillors Riley, Criznak, Hendy, Nay, Sprotson, Watkins, Smith, Finn and Poysna. Thank you. Sorry, apologies.
Just also councillor Darcy has got a three-day trial.
Councillor Bridgeman.
Item two on the agenda, declaration of interests. Can members please make it known, by raising their hand, please, if they have any private or disclosable beneficiary interests in any of the matters on today's agenda? My adviser will take a record of the interests declared. None? Good. Thank you. Councillors, at this point, I would like to move a procedural motion to suspend standing orders for the chief executive to introduce the report, and the chief executive, the monitoring officer and head of electoral services to take any questions for item three, referendum for proposed alternative executive government arrangements. Deputy Lord Mayor, will you second my proposal?
I second your proposal, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. We will vote, move to the vote now. Please vote using the buttons on your unit. Green to in favour, red against and amber to abstain. Motive is carried. I now move to item three, referendum for proposed alternative executive government arrangements. Chief Executive, would you like to introduce the report?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and good morning, council. The council has received a valid petition seeking a referendum for a directly elected mayor, and it now needs to proceed, taking the steps set out in legislation. The next step is for myself as the proper officer for referendum to draw up proposals for the future governance arrangements under a directly elected mayor, and to issue a notice of referendum. The notice of referendum must state the date for the referendum, the prescribed question to be asked, which is set out in law, the main features of the proposal for the operation of the form of governance arising from the constitutional change, and where the proposals can be viewed, and finally, the limit for campaign expenses. The recommendations in the report today ask you to note the receipt of the valid petition, to agree that certain matters are reserved to the first ordinary meeting of full council after a referendum, which would be the September meeting of council, and I'll say a few more words on that in a moment. Agree the draft proposals for the operation of executive arrangements based on a directly elected mayor and cabinet form of governance. To note the content of the draft notice of referendum and information statement that needs to be published after this meeting today. And to note that in the event of a change to a directly elected mayor and cabinet, the council's independent remuneration panel will make a recommendation for the remuneration of a directly elected mayor. In terms of the matters that are reserved, we're asking you to reserve until September. We're asking you to reserve the matters of the local choice, that's about policy decisions, you'll find those in the pack. The overview and scrutiny arrangements, agreement whether the elected mayor would hold the royal charter title, agreed the style of the title of an elected mayor in the event that the two roles are separate, and also to set the date for the second mayoral election, and that's because of the timings of local elections, and it may not be that a full four-year term can be served. In the pack itself, you've got some details which will be in the statement of the proposals that set out some of the key points around the directly elected mayor, and I won't go into those now, but you may have questions that you wish to ask on those matters. So, I appreciate there's a lot of information in front of you. Very happy to answer any questions with my two colleagues.
Thank you, Tracy. Are there any questions? Councillor Laggart.
Thank you. First. Could I ask, according to the papers we have before us, the first petition for this referendum was submitted on the 14th of January. Presumably at that point, there wasn't the requisite five per cent on the yield, and therefore it was resubmitted again on the 28th of January, and again on the 6th of February. Do the 2011 and 2012 referendum regulations permit three bites of the cherry, or should this have been kicked out at the first one on the 14th of January?
The law allows for an amalgamation of the petitions.
Councillor Stevens is the next name I have.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. At the moment, voters in each ward elect councillors, and then every year councillors elect the leader, so we get to say who should be leader of the day every year. What are the mechanisms for removing this type of mayor that we're discussing today after one, two or three years of their term have elapsed on the grounds of unpopularity?
Thank you, councillor Stevens. There is no mechanism for removing the lord mayor. They are in office for four years. A directly elected mayor, sorry. There are certain circumstances in which a lord mayor may be removed, a directly elected mayor may be removed on grounds of ill health or misconduct, but those would have to be dealt with as and when they happened. Thank you.
Councillor Penrose, please.
We're very grateful to the officers for all the information that is being assembled on the models, this model of governance. I just wondered, looking back over the cities that have voted for this type of model and then rejected it after experimenting it with for a few years, whether there's any evidence that one person in this position with no more money, no more power, probably less knowledge, less experience, actually has better results than the model we have at the moment? Thank you.
I'm afraid we can't answer that question. I haven't got that information.
Councillor Matt Smith.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. My question's about the cost, and I think that's what a lot of residents in Plymouth are quite worried about. We already know it's going to be over £400,000 for a referendum. There have been, you know, figures put out there, 1.5 million being a potential cost. It's an estimate, and I know that a lot has been made about the fact that when the council was asked in FOI about the cost, it was said that they didn't hold that information. And is the reality that that is because a directly elected city mayor would just have a blank cheque? They could allocate money to their office however they pleased once in post, much like the directly elected mayor in Tower Hamlets has. His costs have spiraled to £5 million by tripling his number of staff, really expensive refurbishment. So is the reality that the council doesn't hold that information because it would be entirely up to whoever was elected to that post to decide how to spend the money? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Smith. The directly elected mayor will be able to appoint one assistant as their member of staff, which is a directly appointed member of staff that they will set their own terms and conditions for. In terms of any other members of staff, their office, their budget, the budget will be set in the same way as it is now, so it will be a proposal by the mayor and cabinet to full council, and full council will agree the budget in the same way as it does now. Should the full council wish to make any amendments to that budget as proposed, it will do so by a two-thirds majority. Thank you.
Can I have a supplementary, please, Lord Mayor? Thank you. I'm not 100% sure that that's right. I know that in Tower Hamlets, the mayor there was able to triple the size of their office without a vote of the council, as far as I'm aware.
We wouldn't know how they did that.
You wouldn't know how they did that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stevens, John Stevens.
Is it not the case that the budget is not in the same way as it is now? Because under a mayor, there's a different requirement on voting and amendments to the budget, so it is not correct to say that it's the same as it is now?
Thank you, Leader. Just to clarify, when I said the same as now, I meant that the cabinet led by the mayor will propose the budget to full council. Full council may accept the budget by a majority, but if full council does not accept the budget, they must put forward proposals for an alternative budget, which must then be voted for by a two-thirds majority. And that's different now.
Right, does that agree with councillor Stevens again?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And ahead of my question, I thank you for filling your role as a result of being democratically elected by democratically elected councillors across the city, and all mayors before you and those to come. In, not, Lord Mayors, that is, in my role as scrutiny management board chair, I take my role seriously in holding the council leadership to account. What assurances can you give us that our scrutiny functions will not be undermined by a democratically elected mayor? Directly elected mayor, rather.
One of the things that we'll be asking you to do if there is a yes vote in the referendum is to come back to the September meeting with proposals for the overview and scrutiny arrangements, and that checks, those checks and balances are equally important, no matter what form of governance is in place. So I think that would be a matter for discussion about how you scrutinise under those different arrangements.
May I ask a supplementary? Is it beholden on elected members supporting either campaign to disown false campaigning claims?
I don't know, I'm not sure I completely understand the question. Can you help me?
Elected members from either side of the campaign hear, see at first hand false claims in campaigning, should they call it out publicly?
I think that's entirely a matter for individuals.
Right, we move on to councillor Taylor, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The yes campaign has claimed that councillors have diverted millions of pounds of public money into our own private pension pots. I think it's important that the public record shows that this is not true. Do Plymouth City councillors receive a pension and have a pension pot that they can allocate public money to?
No, I can categorically assure everybody that councillors do not receive or have a pension pot for the council. Pensions are payable to employees of the council, but not councillors.
Thank you. I have a councillor Moore, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. If democratically elected mayors are so transformative, why did city after city, including Bristol, Liverpool and Torbay, vote to abolish it? Thank you.
Okay, now I can't answer that question, it's not for the officers to answer that question.
Right, we'll move on to councillor McCarthy, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm surprised to see the yes campaign compare this model to cities like Sydney and Seattle. Could you clarify, do cities like Sydney and Seattle not have an entirely different political and constitutional system?
I have no idea about the arrangements that other cities outside the UK have, so I'm sorry, I'm not able to say anything, I'm just looking at my colleagues.
My Lord Mayor, on a point of order, as we're in committee, generally the question's being asked and not relevant to the officers to answer, can we be sure that questions are appropriate for officers to answer, rather than the sort of flag-flying that members are using this opportunity to have that discussion? These are factual matters that the council officers need to answer, not opinions that members need to go on the campaign trail over.
Right, we have councillor Kest Blight next, please.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. Many people in Plymouth have been well, have seen the well-funded adverts for the yes campaign in their social media feeds. How will Plymouthians know who is actually funding the yes campaign? Why is there no published list of donors? Or should there be?
Thank you, councillor Blight. There's no requirement to publish donors. As from today, when the notice of referendum is published, there is a spending limit on referendum campaigns, which is within the papers of approximately £14,000. All campaigns' material needs an imprint so that the members of the public know who has published that information, and that should enable voters to know who is campaigning one way or the other. There's no requirement for campaigners to register with the authority, but they can do so, and we'll be issuing a campaigners' guidance pack later today, which sets out all that information for campaigners. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lawson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Should a directly elected mayor suggest, for example, as recommended by Angus Forbes, that the council purchase the docks? Could this be done as a unilateral decision without consultation with elected members? Would the directly elected mayor be able to instruct council officers to borrow money to purchase, for example, the docks without any scrutiny? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
The council has a policy framework and would set a budget, so that the fundamental elements of any purchase would be through a budget, a financial envelope that the council has got. In terms of how a matter would be taken forward, I don't think it's appropriate that we would be able to get into that detail this morning.
Thank you. Councillor Linty Gilmore.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm also thinking about the changes that have been talked about, in terms of buying things or cutting costs or spending less. If some of these promises turn out to be unachievable within the structure here, could the yes campaign be held legally accountable for that?
Yeah, I'm not aware of a mechanism that they would be able to be held legally accountable. The mayor will be elected by the people of Plymouth, it's gone through a legal process of a referendum where the people of Plymouth have chosen yes or no to a mayor. Nominations for a mayor will be put forward, and the mayor will be elected in the same way as members are elected, therefore it won't be fundamentally a matter for the yes campaign to answer. Those elections, if they are to happen, each of the candidates in those elections, there would be an expectation that there would be a manifesto with their proposals in it.
Thank you. Councillor McTee, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. My question relates to scrutiny, and has already been touched on by councillor Stevens, but just so I'm clear, and because I'm a huge fan of the scrutiny process, I think it's vital to our democracy and also to holding this council to account. Can you confirm to me, because I was kind of dismayed in the pack to read, that the mayor could reduce the scrutiny capacity of this council to just one committee? Is this correct?
No, that's not correct. It will be for full council to decide what scrutiny arrangements are in place under an elected mayor. Just to clarify, councils have to have at least one scrutiny committee, and that's why it's written in that way in the pack. You can have many scrutiny committees, and the September council meeting, if there were to be a yes vote in the referendum, that's why we're asking you to reserve a number of matters for September, so you can have a full debate on the arrangements.
Thank you. Councillor Lang, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. How much would a directly elected mayor get paid? I've heard figures of around £80,000. Doesn't that effectively double the salary of the person in charge of the council?
The directly elected mayor would be subject to a report to full council on that level of remuneration, and that is on the advice of an independent remuneration panel, so we can't give you a figure.
May I ask a supplementary, Lord Mayor? So who decides how much money a directly elected mayor can spend on their staff and political appointees, and who decides how much a mayor can spend on expenses?
Thank you, councillor Lang. Apart from one post, which I've mentioned, it would be ultimately for council that would approve the budget that the mayor puts forward, that would all form part of the budget proposals and would be voted upon in the way I mentioned earlier. And does that include expenses? So the independent remuneration panel normally sets out the expenses and the whole process is put before full council?
Thank you. Councillor Cresswell, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I ask, will Glender and her team be doing their usual excellent briefings, as they do for agents and candidates in the usual electoral cycles? And will these briefings also cover, as well as all the legalities etc, some of the expected etiquette, standards of behaviour, use of social media and accuracy? Because these are behaviours and standards that I think by and large, we all accept in this chamber, despite our sort of banter, we pretty much stick to these things, and given some of the content we're seeing in social media, it might be a very necessary reminder for everyone.
Yes, we will be, as mentioned by Liz and Tracy already. There will be, we will publish code of conduct for campaigners, we will also have the dos and don'ts, which is aligned with the electoral commission. There will be, and that is why even though campaigners are not by law asked to register with the proper officer or the accounting officer, we would encourage you to do so, so that when we have briefings or the dates of specific election dates, we will be able to tell them, to say them to you or inform you. But we will have briefings and we will issue guidance.
Thank you, that's really helpful. Thank you. Councillor Evans.
Does the chief executive recognise the current claim by the yes campaign that 10,000 school pupils per day, or one in four of our pupils are absent from school every single day? And the council doesn't seem to be doing anything about it, that's what they're saying. If that were true, shouldn't she be doing something about it?
I think through your debate and discussion this morning, you'll be able to deal with those political points, but I won't comment on that.
Supplementary, Lord Mayor? It's not a political debate, it's a simple question of what action will the council be taking against any organisation that is peddling obvious lies and disinformation by any campaign during this referendum?
Thank you, Leader. The regulations surrounding referendums specifically prohibit the council from issuing information other than purely factual information about the referendum itself. During a specific period, we are able to correct factual inaccuracies about the referendum, but we're strictly prohibited in relation to the information we're allowed to issue. No campaigns may, of course, rebut information that they see that's incorrect.
Thank you. I have councillor Ramesford now, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can you confirm, Chief Executive, that directly elected mayors do not obtain additional statutory functions over and above those available to local authorities without a directly elected mayor?
Yes, I can confirm that.
A supplementary, if I may, just to be totally clear, that includes the mayor not having power and functions covering planning, licensing and elections, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. I have councillor Gosling now, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. After the debacle of the Night of Chainsaws on Amada Way, the leader of the council resigned rather than face a vote of no confidence in their leadership. Under the mechanism as a directly elected mayor, is there a mechanism for the people of Plymouth or councillors to remove the directly elected mayor before their full term of office? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gosling. That question has been answered, and there is no mechanism. Thank you.
A supplemental, if I may, Lord Mayor. So would it be safe to say that the role of a directly elected mayor offers the people of Plymouth less flexibility to remove bad mayors compared to bad leaders in this case, because they have fewer powers of removal before full term of office? Yes or no?
I can only say what the law is, and the law is that the Lord Mayor is in post for four years until the elected mayor is in post for four years until the next election.
councillor Wood, please.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. Under paragraph 3.1.8, it states, 'The elected mayor model is introduced following a referendum. The council is effectively locked into that model for ten years from the date of the referendum, and may only change it at a subsequent referendum.' How might local government reorganisation affect this? If Plymouth City Council's boundaries were expanded, then would the council retain a directly elected mayor? If, however, a new council was formed, how would the governance and leadership arrangements be determined?
councillor Wood, that is a very excellent question, and it's a matter that we would want to seek advice from the Ministry of Housing and Local Government Communities on.
Thank you. I have councillor Mark. Oh, sorry, a big problem.
Fair enough. Do we have a timescale on when we might receive that information?
No, we have received no timescale.
councillor Lowry, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm slightly confused by some of the responses that I've received in respect to the campaign, as the terminology we're using. And you talked about, I think, publishing some rules about the campaign, which I'm assuming that would happen today. But there could be many campaigns within that, and if someone were a particularly wealthy individual, they could almost put aside the fourteen thousand pounds, I think someone referred to earlier on, and they could put another, a series of campaigns out there, and thereby funding an unlimited amount of campaigning, despite there being a supposedly restriction that we're all used to in local government. So my question is, can a very wealthy person fund many campaigns if they wish to do so, please?
Technically, anyone can set up any number of campaigns in that way. We're not responsible for regulating campaigns. We are asking campaigns to just register with us, so that we can let them know when postal votes are going out and those sorts of things. But it's entirely up to individuals what they do.
Thank you. councillor Patrick Nicholson, please.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. Is there any evidence that where other local authorities have gone down this route, and incumbent Labour and Conservative councillors opposed it, that they then didn't put candidates up for a mayoral election?
I'm sorry, don't know the answer to that question, sorry.
Right. Next question, councillor Sudan, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So, having been the chair of the Select Committee this year, that spends a lot of time ensuring that the current Lord Mayor role is up to date, and more importantly, non-political, because it is a civic role in the city. And I know we're not making a decision today, but I just want to ask a question for clarification. Is there a possibility that the Lord Mayor role in its current state might disappear?
Thank you, councillor Dan. It's at the gift of full council to decide whether the two roles remain separate. Were the one person to hold the same role, effectively they would have two different roles, and the Royal Charter role would remain, but undertaken by the elected mayor in a separate capacity.
That causes me a lot of concern, then, because we've always felt that the Lord Mayor's role should be apolitical, and is a really important civic function of the city. So effectively, are you saying that the ceremonial part of the Lord Mayor's role would then be politicised, and then we would have a political mayor who would do civic functions such as the raising of the flag, and doing all the things, and Armistice Day, and Arms Forces Day on Remembrance Sunday? That would be a political role, then, and not a civic role representing everybody in the city?
So in relation, the Royal Charter stands, so the city has a proud history of having a Lord Mayor, and that still remains. It would be at the gift of council, full council, to decide whether the role of the Lord Mayor and the role of the directly elected mayor are combined in any way. Can't say more than that.
Thank you. councillor Holloway.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you to Tracy, Liz, Glendon, all of the team, who have probably got other things that they could be spending a lot of time on doing, improving lives of people in Plymouth. So we've heard that the directly elected city mayor model offers possibilities to draw greater range of candidates and so forth. When it was tried in Hartlepool, they elected a monkey. What evidence? I'm really interested to understand how much the team and the council have been engaging with counterpart offices in other local authorities, like Hartlepool, like Torbay, like Bristol, like Stoke-on-Trent, like Liverpool City, who then went on to scrap their mayor model. Thank you.
In drawing up the papers that you have before you, some conversations have happened with other councils to understand the mechanisms. Not to go into the pros and cons, that's not for us to do, that's for other debates, and for a referendum debate and discussion, and clearly the referendum that's held in July.
Thank you. But I guess to clarify, so you are speaking with other local authorities to learn from their experiences. Relatedly, we know that in some of those places that have adopted the directly elected city mayor model and then chosen to scrap it, that that has come with significant costs and implications. Indeed, if we look at somewhere like Doncaster that had a directly elected city mayor, there were extreme cases of children's services being in dire state and requiring central government interventions, huge additions on taxpayers, but also importantly, a negative effect on the children of Doncaster. I'm just really interested to understand how much internal knowledge we're getting in the council about how we learn from the mistakes that other places have made, and that we are best equipped to deal with them should they arise.
If there is a yes vote as part of the, in the referendum, then there will be a significant amount of engagement with those areas that have one, and those areas that don't, to always learn from what's happened. It's not appropriate for me to say any more at this stage.
Thank you. councillor Lager, I have your name again.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. councillor Wood has already asked my question, albeit in a different paragraph of the report, but the answer the chief exec gave is clear. Thank you.
councillor Hayden, next.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In the Yes campaign, they're claiming that they would halve violence against women and girls by doubling the economy. This is where, for me personally, the campaign really crosses the line. Plymouth has been through unthinkable traumas in recent years, where we have mourned life's loss. We've stood in silence at vigils on the Ho and in Kier. We've come together cross-party to fight for safety, for justice, for women, for girls, and for everyone in our city. For someone who didn't live here, maybe, who might not have stood with us during those moments, to now use a pain for the campaign slogan is just tone deaf and offensive. Violence against women and girls is not something you fix with a soundbite. It's need serious long-term work, which is happening cross-party with charities, police and local leaders. It is also important to say, policing does not fall under the council. Whoever leads it, the Police and Crime Commissioner, not the council, or a city mayor, ultimately has the powers over policing and crime, however much councillors like myself are pushing for more. To reduce one of the most traumatic issues Plymouth has faced, to bull a point about growth is deeply hurtful. It's also very deeply disrespectful to those victims and their families. So my question, sorry about that, it was quite a long statement there, Lord Mayor, but my question is, what is your belief? Do you believe if we have a better economy, we will be able to halve our violence against women and girls? Would the elected Lord Mayor be able to achieve this?
It's not for officers to comment on that, councillor Hayden, it's for you and your political debate.
Thank you. councillor Pembury, please.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. Chief Exec, you've talked a lot about conversations with other councils. There have been about twenty-five moralities mentioned by the Yes campaign, obviously the only campaign that's up and running at the moment. Could you let us know how many of those are in single-tier authorities like Plymouth, and actually use the model on offer at this referendum?
I cannot tell you that. The conversations that we're having is about the process to get us to a referendum, and we're not, no other processes. You'll be able to have a look at the material that's on the House of Commons website, other places, but I'm afraid I can't help you with that.
A supplemental, my Lord Mayor. Given that we haven't got that figure, there is a lot of comment being made about the powers of mayors like the mayor of Greater Manchester, and the mayor of London, and the mayor of the West Midlands. Could you quickly explain the difference between the powers of a directly elected mayor and the models such as Greater Manchester and London, which are often being talked about at the moment? I think that is a matter of fact that people do need to understand.
That information, again, is available on the House of Commons website, but there are different types of mayor, as you're aware. We've got a Lord Mayor, some councils, there's a mayor of a place which ceremonial role, directly elected mayors are mayors of councils, and then the combined authority mayors through government changes which have devolved powers down from central government, and often come with some money as well. But the detail of that, you'll be able to find on various external websites.
Thank you. councillor Evans, I believe.
If the council is chaired by the Lord Mayor, who's independent for that year, if the directly elected mayor becomes the Lord Mayor, who chairs the council?
Thank you, Leader. Council members will decide whether the Lord Mayor and the directly elected mayor are one and the same person, and then the council decides on the chairman. The council will then decide on the chairman, on who the chairman will be.
Could you point out where in the standing orders, that is the case, please?
If there were a referendum to say yes to an elected mayor, the constitution would need to be fully reviewed for those points.
So as things stand, the answer to my question is, the Lord Mayor will continue to chair council, whoever it is, until such a time as standing orders are changed. If the council does not agree to change those standing orders, then the Lord Mayor and the directly elected mayor, one and the same person, would chair the council. That's the correct answer to my question, isn't it?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. councillor Brazdel, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I wanted to build on the very astute questions from councillor Stephens and councillor McLeary around the role of scrutiny, which I think everyone in this chamber appreciates the value of. Scrutiny is incredibly important in terms of recommendation, but we also do other positive cross-party working at the moment to make sure there's good governance in place. So a couple of examples of that might be the child poverty work, or the Cross Party Sustainability Group that's recently been set up. I was also thinking about motions on notice, the way in which everyone in this chamber has an opportunity to put forward a motion, and if a majority vote in favour, that's then taken forward as a recommendation for cabinet. So my question, as a technical point, is, could a directly elected mayor, as a single powerful individual, scrap those additional government structures like the Cross Party Sustainability Group or the child poverty work, and override democratically voted motions on notice? Thank you.
A directly elected mayor would appoint cabinet members as appropriate, but in the same way that it's very often in the gift of the current leader and cabinet model to bring forward proposals and arrangements for cross-party working, that would be the same under a directly elected mayor and cabinet. Just want to come back to that point, though, around the Lord Mayor. We will come back to you on that. One of the things that is going to be really important in any changes is to ensure that there is good governance, and I think we just need to check on that situation in relation to combination of the roles of the Lord Mayor and the directly elected mayor. I am not sure about the same person chairing the meeting. I think in terms of good governance, it would be, certainly from the officer's perspective, we would want to make sure that full council fully considers having a chairman, which normally elected through the councillors on a council, to chair a meeting, because otherwise, the directly elected mayor couldn't oversee a meeting when they're presenting papers. That would be rather strange. But we will come back, and we will make that point of clarification to you on that.
Quick supplementary, so thank you for the additional clarification around governance, but I just wanted to come back to that point, that a single person as a directly elected mayor would have the power to scrap longstanding governance structures if they chose beyond the statutory requirements of certain scrutiny committees?
Yes.
councillor Evans, I believe you wish to speak here?
Yes, indeed. In the local government white paper, the government set out its wish to scrap the roles of directly elected mayor for single authorities, making a distinction between those mayors that exist for combined authorities. So Andy Burnham, for example, is a combined authority mayor representing ten Plymouths in Manchester, in Greater Manchester. The mayor of West Yorkshire represents more than one council. The mayor of East Yorkshire, more than one council. Tynan Weir, similarly. London, thirty-two Plymouths. So what is going in the white paper, according to the white paper that was published late last year, is that there's going to be a scrapping of directly elected mayor for single authorities? Is that correct?
That's a risk. We don't know the answer to that. That's why it's in the paper as a potential risk.
Sorry, my question was, was it in the white paper?
Yes, it was. And that's why we've highlighted it as a risk in this paper to you.
Thank you. councillor Lang, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just want to pick up on something that Tracy Lee said, just for clarity. So a directly elected mayor would have no more devolved powers or access to money So a directly-elected mayor would have no more devolved powers or access to money than a current council leader has.
Yes, we're not aware of any additional, it doesn't come with any money like a mayor for a combined authority in that way.
Thank you, councillor Cresswell.
Just clarification, Lord Mayor. The campaign for the democratically-elected mayor is arguing about operating with the smallest possible cabinet in terms of cost-saving. Could I just have sort of clarity that within that cabinet, there would have to be a lead member for children, as I'm aware that is a statutory responsibility?
Thank you, councillor Cresswell. Yes, they, there would be, that would be a requirement, and the legal requirement is for them to have a cabinet of between two and nine cabinet members, so one of those would need to be the lead, and it could be the Lord Mayor themselves.
So it could be a very small cabinet, but that one, that one, that lead member has to in fact, has to in fact be there. So it could be a very cabinet which would be, yes, would be a very, but that definitely has to be, has to have a statutory position of the lead member for children services.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, councillor Noble, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There's been a lot of elections and coverage and news about various elections, and we've mentioned White Papers and things. So where can our residents back in Plymouth go for partial information about this campaign and what's been said by the campaigns?
We have a page on our website that links to other relevant information and particularly the, some parliamentary information, there's a page on our website.
Supplementary, please. Have any of the campaigns' claims been independently verified?
It's not for us to do that, so I've no idea whether anybody else has done that, but it's not for us to do that.
Thank you, councillor Rainsford, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm actually seeking some clarification about the nature of campaign materials. Politicians are fair game, absolutely no problem with that, but I would have a problem if I felt that council officers were being maligned or libelled or slandered as part of the referendum, and there's already been some slightly questionable accusations made out there. Can you please confirm that were council officers to be targeted or accused of losing money or doing whatever, that the council executive would be willing to take action in order to ensure that any wrong was righted?
We would have to review any information that was published in that way and make a decision depending on what was published.
Thank you, I have councillor Wood next.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I thank you for the previous answer on 3.1.8. I wish to return to that same paragraph if I may. I appreciate we don't yet have an indication on the timescales to understand what impact local government reorganisation may have on whether we would continue to have a directly-elected mayor should it be supported in the referendum. Is it your intention to provide this clarity, if it is received from government, noting the White Paper prior to the referendum taking place?
That information, if we do get it from the government, it will be freely available for anyone to access, so yes, we're very happy to circulate any information that we do get.
Thank you, councillor Lowry, please. Right, okay, in that case councillor Allen.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Has Plymouth's economic performance been impacted by the governance structure or by austerity geography and not forgetting, and not getting our fair share from the previous government, where we lost 60p in the pound over the 14 years from 2010? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Officers won't be drawn on that question.
So supplementary, if I may, so you're not able to say that you can agree that our economic performance has been impacted more by the fact that this council has lost 60p in the pound between 2010 and 2024, and there is nothing that a democratically-elected mayor could have done about that?
Thank you very much, councillor Allen, I won't be drawn on that one either. I am not answering the question, it is not about agreeing or disagreeing.
Thank you, councillor John Stevens.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Should a resident in the city, or an employer, or even an officer feel that there's a blatant mistruth in any of the campaign information about the council, about its services, about what it has decided upon, what would the chief executive do to mitigate reputational damage and blatant lies?
If there are any concerns about the conduct of the campaign, the, there is a single point of contact for the police, and any issues need to be reported to the police. Clearly, from the council perspective, we will be looking at any campaign material, but there are very specific rules around what we are able to say and not say during a referendum period.
Thank you. That is the end of my list of people you want. Are there anybody else who wants to ask any questions? Councillor Pembroke?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There've been lots of claims made over recent months about exactly what a directly-elected mayor would do and how they would run the council. Would it be correct to say that none of this can be guaranteed, as these promises would depend on the whim of a directly-elected mayor if the referendum were successful?
So the question before the electorate will be, would you want to change the governance arrangements? Clearly, if there is a yes vote, then there will be an election for a directly-elected mayor, there will be candidates, and the normal process with candidates is candidates produce a manifesto of some sort. There's also then, you know, the process of getting elected and then being able to implement a manifesto, so that, they are stages for another time.
Thanks. So just so the people of Plymouth are clear, what we're agreeing today is not a referendum on whether land is bought or sold, or whether cabinet has a certain number of members, or whether certain things are paid. What we're talking about is purely a referendum on a principle of having someone as a directly-elected mayor rather than a leader, because I think the campaigns have been quite confused about that, and I think it's important that people in Plymouth understand exactly what it is that we're voting for.
Yes, you are correct, and as part of that, clearly, there will be a debate on the pros and cons of the different forms of governance.
Thank you, councillor Brasdel.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think this speaks to the point councillor Pembroke was just making. One of the kind of pledges that the Mayor for Plymouth Campaign has been very clear on from early on is that a directly-elected mayor would allow Plymouth to lead on tree planting, and as colleagues in the chamber will know, that's something I'm personally very passionate about. So my question is, are you aware of additional finance or powers that would come from a directly-elected mayor that would help us to accelerate tree planting in particular? Thank you.
I think we've already covered that question earlier.
Supplementary then, please, if I may. So if that is the case, I just wanted to confirm whether or not, under the cabinet model, Plymouth has already successfully planted tens of thousands of trees in recent years, either through working with community partners, through private or public landowners, through officer time, and through channeling national grants. Have we achieved that under the cabinet model in recent years?
As the cabinet member, I think you're best placed to answer that question.
Right, does anyone, oh, yes. Right. I think councillor Bill Stevens, you were first, and then we have the leader.
You always sound so happy when I indicate to speak, Lord Mayor. I just want to come back to this issue of when is a mayor not a mayor, and what I think is the responsibility of the authority to make clear what's on offer and what isn't on offer, because we have a Lord Mayor, there's a version of a directly-elected mayor that we're discussing, and then there are also the Metro Mayors, and I think there's a very real possibility of confusion. People may not know what they're voting for, and it's not for any of us to draw officers into the merits or demerits of any campaign, but is it our intention as an authority to actually set out what is on offer here, if the referendum were to be successful, with what isn't on offer? I mean, we already have the Registration of Political Parties Act from 1998, which has a South West origin, when somebody stood, some of us will be old enough, no doubt Patrick will remember when someone was a literal Democrat, and that was specifically outlawed to make sure there is no confusion. People can't mischievously confuse the voters. So can we just have a straight, here's what's on offer here, here's why it's not, we're not voting for the continuation or not of the Lord Mayor, we're not voting for a Metro Mayor? I think that would clear things up enormously.
Yes, we have a page on the website which sets out factual information about the different forms of mayor.
Councillor Evans.
It's just to make sure that people understand, because from the, a lot of the adverts have been so far seen, it's mainly been about property development and economic development, and there are 300 services that the council provide, I haven't heard too much about that. What I have heard a lot about is services that we don't run, being under the bailiwick of a directly-elected mayor. For example, ambulance times. So could you confirm, please, that councils aren't responsible for ambulance times, either their poor performance or their great performance, and having a directly-elected mayor would have no bearing whatsoever on ambulance times?
I can confirm that the council doesn't provide ambulance services.
Good, because I thought I might have missed a day at the office. But there are a number of those claims about things that directly-elected mayors can do that they can't do, and I wondered whether there's an opportunity, without you being drawn into any political discussions, for this, but you do run the council as the chief executive and the law officer, so would there be an opportunity to make clear to the public what services can be improved by a council under a leader or a democratically-elected mayor, as opposed to things that they cannot?
Just once again refer you to the page on the website, which contains information and links to other information that's available.
Councillor Lowry.
I just want to clarify, Lord Mayor, and forgive me, I've got a very bad neck, so if there is an ambulance service available, I'd happily take that up at the moment, but financial implications and risk, section 4.2 refers to the potential cost of the mayoral election being in the region of some £410,000, and we as a council have agreed that. But you also made some reference to the fact that there is a risk that the government's White Paper will scrap the elected mayor. So are you telling me we're going to be wasting £410,000 and this is going to be scrapped? And what is the timescale for the White Paper to be published, please? Thank you.
I have no information about when the bill will be published at all. We must act on the legislation that's in place today.
Thank you, councillor Holloway.
Following on from councillor Lowry's question, what representations have been made to the government, given the, you say risk, I'd say it looks as certain, and it can be, that this position will be scrapped? What representations have been made to the government about how we are to navigate this situation? What officials at MHCRG telling you?
We made contact with MHCLG, and they were very, very clear that the legislation is, we must act on the legislation in place.
I believe we can assume therefore that we can, we're hearing more from the government on this matter down the line. Have any estimations been made about how much it will cost the council if we vote for a mayor, elect a mayor, scrap a mayor, go back to the current model? Have we made any estimations about that in its entirety?
No, we haven't, not at this stage.
Right, thank you. Are there any more questions? Councillor Evans.
Well, I think councillor Holloway's asked a very fair question, that we don't know that figure, I think we should know that figure. Could you please indicate whether that figure could be made available before the polling day, because I think it would have a material bearing on the outcome of the election. Similarly, on the question that I asked about the number of schoolchildren missing school, that must come as a tremendous cost and worry to parents that one in four, according to the democratically-elected mayor Yes! campaign, that one in four of our children are missing school. Can I ask if the chief executive will take steps with the Lord Mayor to call an emergency general meeting of the council to discuss this, if this fact is true? If this fact is not true, she could today tell us for sure that that figure is improper and not a fact.
So in relation to the first matter, we are taking this one step at a time, and at this stage, we are looking at the process to conduct a referendum. If there's a yes vote, then we will move forward at that stage. Any other groups are able to access information that other councils have in any way they can, but at this stage, I'm not in a position to be able to do that. At the same time, I won't be drawn on precise numbers in terms of school attendance, I haven't got those, that information in front of me, and it would be wrong for me to say a figure that I haven't confirmed.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Evans.
Sorry, Lord Mayor, I do apologise to the back row there, but unfortunately, some of us, some of us are interested in getting stuff on the record here. So if I could on the record just say the persistent absence is 22%, that applies to a small number of pupils. Overall absence is much less than that, in fact, it's around 7%. So these are the sort of figures that are being put into the public domain main by an unaccountable campaign, and the council cannot, will not refute them.
My Lord Mayor, on a point of order, there's nothing in the agenda paper that talks about school attendance.
I've been told that you need to reserve these questions in your speeches for the debate, not bringing them now.
Are you saying I should mention that later on? Yes, yes. I shall do. Thank you, thank you for the advice.
If there are no more questions at the moment, I will formally move the recommendations. Deputy Lord Mayor, I understand you will second?
I formally second, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. So, does anybody wish to speak? Yes, councillor Lang. Councillor Lang, you're the first person I've seen.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to make a point about both the timing of this referendum and also the cost, which we've heard a lot about this morning, and we know is estimated to be at least £410,000. Angus Forbes' campaign's first act has been to play fast and loose with the city's finances, because they could have chosen to time their petition with the usual electoral cycle. They could have chosen not to cost us anything like £410,000, but they didn't. They chose to proceed, knowing the financial impact on this council of that decision. What are we to make of people who are so cavalier about the city's finances? And as we've also heard, and the Chief Executive has confirmed, the government's white paper clearly indicates this form of governance is going to be phased out. So when, as the white paper clearly indicates, this mayoral model is ruled out, will Angus Forbes apologise for leading us all down this electoral dead end into a zombie referendum, which is costing us, all of us, hundreds of thousands of pounds? We don't want this referendum, we don't need this referendum, we should not be spending £410,000 on this referendum. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I owe you an apology, because I should have said that after the first set of questions, the suspension of standing orders, which will end now. And I now have councillor Smith next.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. What a terrible idea all of this is. There are countless reasons that we shouldn't be doing it. £410,000 for a referendum for a role that's going to be scrapped, a blank cheque if a mayor were to be in place, to spend however much money they like on their staff, on their offices, as has happened elsewhere. You know, the campaign can say, oh no, this is going to save Plymouthans money. It probably won't, because whoever gets in can do what they want, it is that simple. It's going to be scrapped, the government's made that clear, and cities that have already tried it have already scrapped it too. There are countless lists of it. In fact, half of the places that have tried it have already scrapped it. There are no new powers, no new money, it doesn't benefit any of us. So then we have to ask the question, why is an individual campaigning for a change to the governance in a city that he has no ties to, has only lived here for three years? And the answer appears to be very simple, and I've got to be very careful what I say. But at the end of the day, the man funding the campaign for a directly-elected mayor is a multimillionaire who invests in property, he's denied he invests in property, then he was chased up by the Herald and he had to clarify that actually, yes, he is a property investor. So why is he trying to change the governance structure so that one person, who I'm sure that he will be backing when they come up with a candidate, because the campaign has said that they will have a candidate, why is he supporting this? And it's really, really simple, it's because he has said in a public meeting about why he wants this to happen, that Plymouth is incredible real estate. That's a quote, he's described Plymouth as the best real estate in the country. He said that in a meeting in Devonport Live, when telling people that he wanted this to happen. And then after that, he speaks about why he wants the council to buy Mill Bay Docks, which is a bit of land that is fairly underdeveloped, right on the water's edge. I'm not going to say what that means, people can put two and two together, but when a multimillionaire with no link to our city comes along and decides he wants to change our governance structure and talks about our city like that, to him it is just a piece of real estate. He doesn't care about the city, he doesn't care about the people in him, he sees an opportunity, he's trying to take it. And it's a shame that some people have sort of been taken in by that, and they're going to be taken along by this and vote for this system. But I think it's clear to all of us who do care about our city, what those intentions are. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lager.
I thank you, my Lord Mayor. Good afternoon, members. I'm sure many of you raised some concerns of what we heard earlier today in the question and answer session. Whilst I fully accept that the gentleman behind this has noble motives, to my mind, the whole concept of a directly-elected mayor for the city of Plymouth is ill-conceived. We've heard today about the cost of the referendum, which was brought up at the budget meeting, some over £400,000. We've also heard today, my Lord Mayor, that the cost, well, the allowance, or the salary, call it what you will, that is to be paid to the newly-directly-elected mayor is circa £80,000, as councillor Lang has elicited. We know full well that they can pay for an assistant and possibly a deputy mayor as well, plus an entourage. This city has a housing crisis, we have homeless people on the streets, this city has a problem of send, and our budget is stretched to the absolute limit. And now we are spending money on an unnecessary scheme, which this council has already have a system of governance which has been in place for a good number of years. Let us come on to the political aspect of this. This is nothing more than a directly-elected dictator. This is a situation where we have somebody in office for four years, we as members can't remove them, the people that put them in the place in the first place can't remove them. This is nothing more than a dictatorship. As a conservative group, as an ideology, we have always been against departing into unknown territory. We have always been advocates for incremental change as part of the ideology. We therefore would never support a system which is deviating from an established process that this city has had for generations. So the concern of the group is totally against. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I have councillor McCleary.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. One person can't save our city, one person can't fix the fact that one in three children here are growing up in poverty, one person can't fix our homes, which are the dampest and mouldiest in the UK, one person can't fix our crises in social care, send education, our homelessness epidemic, nor find local solutions to the climate and nature crisis. They can't fix our stagnant wages nor the cost of living crisis. One person can't solve the anger and disillusionment that led to riots in our streets last summer, nor can they fix the deep-seated issues that resulted in tragedy after tragedy in our city, as we mourn too many lives lost to men's violence against women. We have been failed, and actually, more accurately, we are still being failed. But that failure cannot and will not be fixed by one person alone. You see, the issues that we're facing here in Plymouth are not the product of bad leadership alone, they're the result of deep systemic problems that demand collective effort, transparency and accountability. In this chamber, we are often really guilty of not recognising the anger that is bubbling up in the communities outside of this space. But frankly, if you aren't angry right now, it's because you aren't paying attention or because you're privileged enough to look away. This referendum is a signal that people here are angry and they are right to be. But sadly, I feel that this referendum isn't asking the right question. The choice in the ballot between our current leader and cabinet model, which I agree is far from perfect, and a directly-elected mayor, which I think would be far worse. The real question should be, how do we build a safer, fairer, more democratic and more accountable system for Plymouth? And that answer is not a directly-elected mayor. A directly-elected mayor would not bring more power to our residents, it would bring another level of bureaucracy, another inflated politician's salary and less scrutiny over the decisions that impact all of us. A mayor would have no new powers and unlock no new money. I am also deeply concerned that once elected, a mayor cannot be removed mid-term, no matter how badly they fail our city. So I'll be voting no for a mayor, not because I think the current system is good, but because I believe Plymouth deserves better. I want to be absolutely clear, though, that I respect the legitimacy of this referendum. Giving power to people to decide how they want their city done is so important, but this referendum offers a false choice, and neither option, to keep our system or change it, will deliver the change that we need to see. So I don't want to see Plymouth with a mayor, but I want to see Plymouth governed differently. So I agree with the angry, the apathetic and the aggrieved that we need a shake-up. Business cannot continue on as usual. I think the change that we need is a committee system, and I'm sad it's not on the ballot. I would love to see councillors work across the political system to share decision-making power. At the helm of the yes campaign is a multimillionaire, an ex-London city banker who is pouring his wealth and influence into trying to reshape this city's democracy. A man who wants house prices here to rise. I don't know any first-time buyer or someone trying to get in the housing market that agrees with that sentiment. Moreover, the yes campaign says that they have leaders waiting in the wings to fix our city. You know what? I'd love to meet them. Why don't they want to join the fight now? Why don't they want to stand for Gainsall, get stuck in in the hard graft and embed themselves in their communities, work in service of our city? Or are they only interested when it comes with an inflated wage packet and influence? Plymouth deserves better than strongman politics. We deserve real democracy and real accountability, and we deserve a system that is built for the people and not the powerful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bill Stevens, please.
Thank you very much indeed, Lord Mayor. Twenty-three years ago, the majority of Plymouthans voted against this when it was last on offer. I was one of them, and nothing since has done anything to change my mind. I think we made the right decision then, and I hope we make the similar correct decision going forward now. The lack of accountability in what's on offer is scary. There's no way that we would design this ourselves if we were looking to make some amendments, and to put in the hands of one individual person this amount of power with no accountability is scary. It's unhealthy, and I believe we should have nothing to do with it as a city. As has been said already, this isn't the sort of mayor that we've seen in other parts of the country. Andy Burnham has been mentioned, who have used that power in a collegiate, sensible, measured way to actually improve people's lives across a number of authorities. That's not what's on offer, and that message needs to go out loud and clear across Plymouth. This is going to be, if it does ever see the light of day, a huge white elephant, Lord Mayor. Can you imagine if a council leader, and this isn't about personalities or parties, but a council leader of any political party decided to spend this much money on a project that was going to be removed anyway? The 151 officer would be on the phone to that leader and that cabinet member for finance straight away, saying, don't do this. And that's the message we've got to get out, it's irresponsible, Lord Mayor. The message, for me, has got to be that nobody, no matter how rich, no matter how many millions they've got, can waltz into this city and buy the political system they find. That can't be allowed to happen, Lord Mayor, it really can't. So we've got to stand behind the system we've got, that has, I believe, worked well for generations, as councillor Lager has alluded to. We've got to stand up for transparency, stand up for accountability and send this idea packing where it belongs.
Thank you, councillor Stevens. Councillor Evans, please.
Yeah, twenty-three years ago, we had that referendum and it was great. Patrick and I stood shoulder to shoulder, Patrick in fighting it down. I wonder what's changed in that regard, to see you so vehemently supporting what is a complete and a waste of money. But we don't have a choice today, we don't have a choice today, do we, about this? The council has to note the fact that there has been a successful referendum, and we're reserving today a number of matters for discussion later on when we see the outcome of that referendum. Things that we can't tell you today is the legislation is so full of holes that the council has to commission additional legal support in order that we do not fall foul of a campaign that may be litigious. And in other words, we've got to get everything right, which is why today, officers have been dancing on the edge of a pin in terms of answering questions today, lest they draw the council into a conversation that might end up costing taxpayers even more than this incredible £410,000. So I pay tribute to the way in which they've handled it today, and apologise to them for any short temper on my part. But it's really important that people understand what this referendum will bring, or rather, what it won't bring. And what it won't bring is a magic wand. Anybody reading those messages on Facebook and Twitter will be forgiven for thinking that if only you get this, it's almost like, vote for a mayor and get a microwave. That is kind of retail politics, is ridiculous, but that's what's being promised. Vote for a mayor and ambulance times will come down. Well, they won't because of a mayor. Vote and we'll abolish, get rid of violence against women and girls. Well, you can't do that. And anyway, that's the responsibility of the Police and Crime Commissioner and the Chief Constable. There are loads of false prospectuses flying around at the moment, and we haven't even started the election campaign. Imagine, I dare say the independents will be standing, probably on an independent ticket, don't know. Who'll be paying for that ticket? Don't know. Well, I'm glad to hear that, Terry, I really am, if you don't mind me saying so. I'm almost, my heart's beating faster with that news. But the point is, there will be people vying for political support. What the yes campaign has already assumed is that their result is in the bag, and I think that's incredibly arrogant. So let's have this referendum, because we've got to have this referendum, but people need to know that there are no extra powers, no extra money, there's an additional councillor, there won't be less councillors, there'll still be the 57 in here, but there will be an additional councillor, who won't be called a councillor, because there won't be a councillor, but they have the same powers as councillors. So there'll be 58 of us in this marriage. And the fact of the matter is that they will cost more than any councillor standing in this chamber at the moment. Again, the yes campaign promising that the salary be less, they can't do that, because that's a council decision based on an independent panel's recommendation, another false prospectus. So this is going, it's a waste of money. And it has been tried and failed and scrapped right across England. There aren't any in Wales, there aren't any in Scotland, and the ones in England are going, have been going voluntarily because the public have had enough, and the rest of them will be going because the government has had enough of these ineffective, expensive people who are adding no value. So please, this is the start of the referendum today, I'm going to be voting no, and I suggest humbly that you all do too. There's a lot to argue about the future of Plymouth and a lot to celebrate, and we're going to be spending a lot of time and a lot of money on this referendum over the next few weeks. And it will add nothing to the potential for this city's success, which will be made by the people of Plymouth and this council going forward. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I now have two more people. First of all, councillor Holloway.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I don't really want to add much more than what I think has been said.
I don't really want to add much more than what I think has been said, well, in various parts of the chamber. I think what I do want to say is some comments that we've heard recently from Plymouth residents themselves, people who aren't politicians, who don't think about the stuff that we do day in, day out. Keith Tutman, who was in the Moreau Marines for 27 years, he said, "For every complex problem, there's a solution that's simple, neat and wrong." And that's what this is. Heard from a woman, a former social worker for many, many years, now retired, who signed the petition at the cafe in Whitely, Porky's. And she said she thought she was doing the right thing. She didn't follow politics, thought she was doing the right thing that would make Plymouth better. She didn't know that this position was going to be scrapped. She didn't know that this was going to cost a lot of money. And this is a pattern that we're hearing. People who might be interested in it, it's change. It sounds good. But it ultimately doesn't do what it says on the tin. It can never do what it says on the tin. It's been tried, tested and it's failed. Even worse than that, it's going to be scrapped. Now, we talk about anger in politics. We talk, I understand the motivations of why people signed. A small number of people, but an important number of people nevertheless, signed the referendum. But for those people to go through this journey, to be led through this journey, to then see it's going to be scrapped and costs Plymouth even more money, as Tudor has so eloquently said, I believe this risks making people more angry than less angry because it cannot ultimately deliver on the promises it makes. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I have councillor Patrick Nicholson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, councillor. Just very briefly and hopefully to move this to a vote. Can I say that for 10,000 people to be signing a petition, for whatever the circumstances, is in itself a major achievement? And we shouldn't dismiss people signing petitions. 7,000 people came back recently on the all-out elections option. But sadly, there is a massive disconnect between the city council, elected politicians and the community. Many in this chamber are elected by less than 30% of the vote in their wards. I struggled, other than when it's coincided with the general election, to get much more than 40% of the Plinton-Somary electors over 31 years to actually turn out and vote in local elections. So there is an issue, a fundamental issue, and I totally support the contribution that councillor McClay has made between the wider population and politicians. And I think we'll see on Thursday this week the major political party suffering again at the ballot box because of that disconnect. Now, why have we got to the situation where 10,000 people have thought that it's important to change the system? I have to say through you, Lord Mayor, and it's in no way being personal to councillor Evans, but the Labour offer in Plymouth has been the same since 1999. And I think that, to some extent, is part of the problem. We also had the situation, the last Conservative leader, of a complete mayhem in Armada Way. Again, totally having disrespect for the local community. You've got climate change and taking all the trees down, supported by councillor Pembroke under an urgent decision. It's again not what the public...
Lord Mayor, a point of order, that is factually incorrect. I did not support anything under an urgent decision relating to Armada Way.
Thank you.
Well, I stand by it, Lord Mayor. And there was an urgency decision taken for that matter, for the leader to be able to progress that item. But that's not what I'm talking about now. Sorry. Right. Lord Mayor, the point is, that's why I'm trying to...
Point of order. The councillor must withdraw his false allegation against a member of the county. He cannot be allowed to continue as if nothing has happened. He made an allegation against one of our councillors, which was not true. He must be commanded to withdraw it because it's not true.
I'm happy to withdraw it, but I believe on credit. I'm happy to withdraw it in the context of the meeting because I can't find... I'm happy to withdraw the comment and I'll continue on the discussion. The fact is, what we've had this morning is another example of the inefficiency of local government. We're here today because the legislation says that if a referendum is generating, generates a certain number, we have to go for a referendum. So why the nonsense that we've had today in terms of questioning it? The campaign, as you say, councillor Evans and other members, starts from today. Councilors and the population at large need a debate, an honest and open debate as to how we see this city governed. And what needs to be remembered is the elected mayor, if we should ever have such a person, would need to work with the city council in most of what they do. It's basically a partnership between an elected mayor and the council. Having been a leader of a group of 39 in 2000, it is difficult at times to manage large groups. And in any group, you get a diverse number of individuals. And so the leader is not always empowered to do everything they would like as a leader because they're obviously, to an extent, controlled by the group. But one could say is, how can we've never resolved the airport? You know, there are major city issues that the current leader and model has never resolved. Yet the public have got a view on it. We are either going to reopen the airport or we're not. Why are we spending decades after decades trying to move this thing forward? So that's only one example. That's only one example where the city is no further forward now as it was a few years ago. And the public at large are frustrated. So there is an opportunity, Lord Mayor, for the public to have a debate as to what the best form of governance is. For me, the jury's out. I think it is worthy. It's worthy that 10,000 people have signed a petition. It's worthy of a debate and allow the public to make a decision. And whatever they decide, we will need to go along with as an elected council. So I hope very much it will be a good campaign. The public at large will ask questions. They will get honest answers as far as that can be provided. But let's hope through this, whether we stay with the leader or whether we go for an elected mayor, that actually we have a better form of governance and more participation by the public at large rather than the dwindling numbers that have participated in local elections over the last 20 or 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any more people before, who wish to speak? Oh, councillor Pembroke.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I was quite disappointed in that speech, which became very personal and actually shared a lot of misinformation. And I don't think that that was at all helpful in today. Just to clarify, there was an urgency decision made around Armada Way by councillor Riley, not by me. That's councillor John Riley, just to make that clear. It is important that in this chamber, we state facts, not what we think the facts are, councillor Nicholson. So let's state a fact. A member of the cabinet, when the airport was closed, is not sitting anywhere on this side of the chamber. It's not sitting in the first three rows on that side of the chamber. You will, however, find two of them sitting in your group. And let's listen to the people, shall we, councillor Nicholson? Shall we listen to the people about an incinerator? Passed when you and a colleague in your group were members of the cabinet? I think...
Lord Mayor, can I, Lord Mayor, as a point of order, I declared an interest as a Babcock employee. I had no part whatsoever in the decision on the incinerator because as an employer of Babcock, they benefited from the cheaper energy.
Lord Mayor, I will clarify. I was talking about members of the cabinet at the time the decision was made, not the decision-makers themselves. Let's be clear, councillor Nicholson. If you want to fight dirty, I'm sure we can find plenty of dirt. But that shouldn't be what's happening here and it shouldn't be misinformation in the council chamber as well as misinformation out of the council chamber that we're fighting at the moment. So actually, let's be clear. The airport was closed under the leadership of a Conservative administration. And it was under a Conservative administration that an urgency decision was made, not by us. So please, talk about the truth and that truth really matters. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Well, thank you, everybody. I think that's been a pretty lively discussion. I propose that we now move to the vote. The motion was passed. And this concludes the business of this full council. Thank you, members, for your time and engagement. And I wish you, all those watching, a good afternoon and hope you will stay safe and well. And before we finish, I think this is the last time you're going to have me up here. I would thank you. I would like to thank you for your support and kindness in putting up with my mistakes and wish your next Lord Mayor very well when she comes. Thank you.